Council meeting. Hearing devices are available with the city clerk. To avoid a meeting disruptions, please place cell phones in silent mode or turn them off during the meeting. All meetings are recorded. When addressing the council, please sign in and state your name and speak clearly into the microphone. We have Joe lead us in the pledge. Have to just bear with me a little bit. This is not my regular spot as mayor pro tem, so if I if I get lost along the way, just just bear with me. We'll do roll call. Ward one.
Here.
Ward two is myself, so I'm present. Ward three is Stan Lau. He's present. Ward four.
Present.
Ward five.
Present.
1.3 is public forum. This is the portion of the meeting devoted to the public. The public may comment on any matter that is not specifically included on the agenda as an action item. Items not included on the agenda cannot be acted upon other than to place them on future agenda. If you wish to comment, you can do so in person at the meeting or use raise your hand feature on Zoom. Public comments are limited to three minutes. Please avoid repetition. The mayor may at his discretion hold comments until the second public forum at the end of the meeting. Public comments submitted prior to 4:00 PM the day of the meeting will be provided to the city council and added to the record will not be read during the live meeting. Any public input received after 4:00 PM the day of the meeting will be included in the record, but may not reach council members before action is taken. Is there any public input? Is there any online? Okay. 1.4 approval of the agenda. Be looking for a motion. Councilmentors.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda with taking consent item 2.26, moving to the regular agenda for discussion.
I'll second that.
Please vote. The agenda passes consent agenda. Well, look for a motion for the consent agenda.
Madam Chair.
Councilmentors.
On the consent agenda.
Point, excuse me, a point. Usually when you do this, if you're going to take something off the agenda, like we took something off the consent, you'd want to do it during this time. It's the best way. Anyway, just giving you a point.
I'd like to make a motion to on the consent agenda to pull 2.6, 2.7, and 2.9 from tonight's agenda for further discussion with staff at a later time.
Second that motion.
Please vote. Okay, reports. This item is for various public entity representatives to provide general information to the council and public. No action will be taken. I guess we can start with our sheriff's department.
Good evening, Fernley City Council, Line County Sheriff Brad Pope for the record. I just want to start off by thanking the entire city of Fernley staff for working with us on the national night out last night. Fernley staff that was there was incredible, really helped us out, did a good job. And I know that the the community appreciates it and appreciates the support, so thank you. Chief Deputy Brandingham usually gives this report. He's in leadership training in Carson City, so he couldn't make it. And I'd take the opportunity to share some data with you. We track data extensively throughout the sheriff's office, see where our work's going and where we need to improve. The number one complaint we receive at the sheriff's office and that I receive across my desk are traffic complaints. And so I asked our dispatch manager Lieutenant Willie to pull the traffic stop data for the city of Fernley. And year to date, there's been 1,907 traffic stops alone in the Fernley patrol zone. I have instructed our command staff that oversee each area to begin operating traffic operations more heavily throughout their areas. So we should see an increased level of traffic stops passing our 2024 numbers throughout the county, but especially in Fernley. Another point of data that I like to talk about is our response times are remaining low. Priority one response time in Fernley right now is five minutes and 45 seconds. Priority two is seven minutes and 58 seconds. And priority three is 10 minutes and 52 seconds. Part of the reason that the response times remain low, one is the geography of the city. Everything's pretty close and the amount of deputies that are off training and are assigned to the city of Fernley. So we're operating with 16 deputies right now. Our SROs, we now have two assigned to Fernley since school's not in. They've been running more operations in the city too. So getting a little bit of a saturation throughout the summer. That being said, our SROs are ready to go back to school. Partway through last year, I assigned a second SRO to the Fernley schools, mostly because the single SRO was inundated with calls and reports. And she was getting beat up, not literally, but by calls, working a lot of overtime. So we now have two full-time SROs. We've made a new MOU with the school district. They they support that SRO and everything's going good there. So that being said, it's a short report. We had a night in the country two weeks ago. Doesn't really affect this area, but does affect the region. Ran into Councilman Torres there. He was very well behaved and it was a good event for the county and no major incidents occurred. So that being it, just want to say thank you again for National Night Out.
Councilman Lau.
Yeah, I just had one question. Were those numbers, traffic stops, were those also Nevada Highway Patrol numbers too?
Those are strictly Line County Sheriff's Office numbers.
Yeah, and you know, we were talking about NHP last night. They probably have tripled those numbers, you know, those guys.
I would hope so.
Yeah.
It's their one function.
Thank you.
Councilman Hannah.
Thank you. Evening, Sheriff Pope. It's always good to see you. Great to see you last night in National Night Out. Good event. The K-9 presentations were outstanding. I think everyone was was thrilled to death at how they performed. I want to thank you for your hard work and dedication to the city of Fernley. I read recently in the Fernley reporter that you're 100% staffed. Is that correct?
Well, we were.
You were?
Before that report came out, we lost a deputy to some medical reasons last Friday, but we've already interviewed his replacement and he's scheduled to start work, so.
Yeah, it's just great news that we have everyone staffed and we really appreciate all your hard work. So thank you very much.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. If there's no more outside, Mr. Jacobson. We'll move on to staff. Go ahead, Ms. Lydia Altec.
Lydia Altec, deputy city manager. I just wanted to let you know that the mayor has nominated Jessica Murdock from our city staff to head up the 25th anniversary. And that'll be in 2026 of July. It coincides with the nation's 250th anniversary or independence anniversary. So it's pretty exciting. So we are going to have some community meetings coming up and actually a advisory committee. And it's all on the website, but what she's looking for are local organizations to provide a representative. And then, of course, later on volunteers as we get closer into the week of the event. And that'll be the few days before July 4th is when that's going to take place. Main Street Art Park, it's moving along. We've put in some art installations, a sign and look for more of that tomorrow, actually. And next Tuesday, August 12th, from eight in the morning till 1:00 PM, there is a planting, community planting. So we invite everybody to come out and plant all the plants that we're going to have for our new planters out there. There's going to be three large planters for trees, but there's going to be many smaller planters for smaller stuff. So hopefully we'll get you to come out for that. And I just want to thank Twisted Steel. They've donated $1,200 worth of art for the project. And ACES has donated $2,500. So it's really exciting and I don't see them here tonight, but we'll be recognizing them. Just a reminder, the Blue Ribbon Cutting for the Community Response and Resource Center is on a Wednesday, August 27th, from 2:00 to 4:00. Looking forward to that event. That's all I got.
Thank you. I'm sorry for not saying deputy city manager. I think that might be the hardest part is that I call everyone here by their first name. And so if I call on you and it's not ultra professional, I'm so sorry. Okay, so we'll move on to council. Councilman Hannah.
Thank you. I just want to thank the sheriff's department for National Night Out last night. It was a great event. I want to thank the city staff, Ms. Altec and her husband, John, was there cooking hot dogs. And it was great to see him. He's always a good time. Ms. Homie was there and we had other city staff. It was a great event. I was also, some of us were able to attend the chamber quarterly luncheon this afternoon. A great presentation by Mark IV Capital about the Victory Project and a lot of information. And we're super excited about that. And I want to thank everyone for coming tonight. It's good to see you. Thank you.
Councilman Lau.
I too would like to thank our deputy city manager, Lydia Altec, and her Mr. Cool husband, John Altec. I've known John since 1982. We went to the greatest college in the world, the University of Nevada Reno. And he was Mr. Cool then, and he's just Mr. Cool barbecue artist now. Thank you, Lydia, for taking care of everybody.
I don't have anything at this time. Councilmentors.
Just a reminder, the Senior Citizen Advisory Committee meeting will be this Friday here at Council Chambers at 9:00 AM, and we hope as many people can show as possible. Thank you.
Councilman Mendoza.
Nothing to report.
Okay, 4.1, Discussion Impossible Action. First reading a bill, number 361, associated with CA 25001 to revise section 32.03040B, Comprehensive Master Plan Amendment of the City of Fernley. Development code to better reflect the requirements found in NRS 278.210 for amending the master plan.
Thank you. Michelle Rambo, Planning Director, for the record. This is a real first reading for a really quick revision to the master plan amendment process that we ran into some issues with when during the Southwest Area Plan Adoption. So we're just going to clean it up. And this is the first reading and we'll discuss it more at the next meeting.
Is there any questions? Thank you. The item that we took off of the consent agenda and moved on to the regular agenda, will we put that at the beginning now or we'll put that at the end? Okay. I think that we can probably, well, we'll hear it after. 5.1, Discussion Impossible Action Regarding the Final Preliminary Engineering Report for the City of Fernley Water Treatment Plant, Caustic Soda and Compressed Air System Improvements, and Seek Direction to Proceed with Final Design Bidding Services and Construction Costs.
Good evening, Mayor, council members and city manager and all those here tonight. My name is Anna Navarro. I'm the Utilities Engineering Manager for the Utilities Department here in city of Fernley, for the record. Tonight, we're presenting the final preliminary engineering report, also known as a PER, for the Caustic Soda and Compressed Air System Improvements at the Fernley Water Treatment Plant. These improvements are essential to support the city's upcoming transition to surface water treatment and to ensure the continued supply of safe drinking water in compliance with the Nevada Administrative Code 445A.531. The report outlines the current deficiencies in the plant's caustic soda and compressed air systems, both which both are critical to maintain reliable and safe operations. Our engineering consultant, Kellen Keller and Associates, will present the summary of the PER, which I will then turn now to the presentation. Thank you.
Evening, council. Hey, Anna, I think we got the wrong presentation. One minute.
Okay, sorry, we're going to wait for the PowerPoint that you're looking for. So we're going to table this and move on to the next agenda item as long as you guys are okay with that.
Absolutely. Thank you.
5.2, Presentation and Discussion Regarding the City's Quarterly Financial Report. Sorry.
Oh, no problem. Good evening, council. For the record, Robert Carson, City Treasurer. And we're going to go over the quarterly financial report, unaudited for June 30th, 2025. So as with every quarter, these numbers are not final. While we're getting closer to the final numbers for the end of the year, we still have some adjustments to make, but we'll go through these relatively quickly. So this is a new presentation on our cash and investment breakdown. I did a three-year history just to kind of show where we were at. The our basic checking account that we pay all our bills from. You can see it was fairly low, about $2 million in '23, and then up to $13 million in '24. And that's because we had a guaranteed interest rate that was returning really well. Then that interest rate lower, so we moved all that money out and put it in our longer term investments. So it's back down about $2 million. Our LGIP, which is a state government investment pool that has right around $17 million in it. So that one's getting good returns, but not quite as good as the longer term investments. And then Atlantic Capital, you can see that's our longer term investments. Quite a big jump between the fiscal years, and that's because we moved 13 or about $10 million over on top of the returns that we're getting from it. So the total, we have about $105 million in cash and investments. Pretty steady between fiscal year '24 and fiscal year '25, which is great considering we had some very large projects and a lot of cash going out, but we still have the cash coming in. So our general fund, this is our revenues broken down by category. You can see the total less RTC, so more of our operating type revenues. Right now, they're about $1 million over what was budgeted. A good portion of that or most of that is interest earnings. And then we also had miscellaneous donations that we don't really rely upon, but they're really nice to have. We also have about $500,000 of franchise fees that we have to move back, so those will add to that total. And then about $500,000 in indirect costs that we have to move still to. So at the end of the day, we'll be about $2 million over what we budgeted in revenues. For our expenses by category, the salaries you can see came in at 96% of budgets. Our budgeting was pretty good. We had some savings with vacancies and things like that throughout the year. Our benefits, outside services, all in all, our expenditures less RTC. So our operating expenditures were about $4 million less than what we budgeted. But that budget also included $4 million for the CERC, which was not utilized at all. So our total general fund expenditures as of right now is about $15 million. And our net change in fund balance is a little over $2 million. So that'll bring our ending fund balance to $17 million right now, and we'll add in about another million or so, give or take. So we'll end up in a really strong position. Most of those, most of that fund balance is cash. So that's really good, really good place to be. And then just our general fund expenditures by department. As you can see, everybody at the end of the year, for the most part, is up about 90%. Street and storm drains and facilities, those ones are down. Most of that's because some projects, just the money wasn't needed and it came in under budget, those types of things. So. So our revenue source is a percent of total revenue. You can see our total or our highest percent of revenue is taxes. Our second is licenses and permits. Indirect costs, like I said, haven't been there. And then we also have some other licenses and permits. So those will even out a little more too. So licenses and permits and taxes are really what we rely upon in the city for revenue. And then our expenditure source is a percent of total expenditures. As you can see, salaries and benefits are about 50% of what we spent our money on, 30% on outside services and the rest on supplies and capital outlay. And then just budget and actual for our general fund, less the RTC funds. So we had a $4 million budget deficit budgeted for FY '25. And we're actually about $1 million or $2 million positive for the year, which is, you know, great news. And then with the RTC funds included, just because that's an in and out type of thing. So we spend the money and we get reimbursed from the county. So it just kind of inflates both sides equally, not much difference in it. So our water enterprise fund is doing great as well. This is a budget to actuals, so our operating revenues are coming in higher than what we budgeted. Non-operating revenues are much higher than what we budgeted, and a lot of that is investment earnings. Capital contributions, those aren't final, so those will come closer to what we had budgeted as we make year-end adjustments. And then the expenses look a little low. There's still probably three to four million dollars of expenses to post in there between depreciation, OPEB and pension adjustments that we make at the end of the year. So that roughly $14 million increase in net position will come back down probably closer to nine or 10, but that fund is doing great. And then just a representation of budget versus actuals. So we had $7 million or $6.5 million budgeted to increase, and we have $13 million at this time. And then the sewer enterprise fund, same story as the water enterprise fund. It's doing really good and the operating revenues are up higher. The non-operating revenues again are allotted investment income. Those are performing really well. Capital contributions will finalize here in the next few weeks. And then non-operating and operating expenses of same story as the water fund. We still have depreciation, OPEB and pension to post. And so probably another million and a half dollars worth of expenditure or expenses to post in there. So it'll bring that increase in that position down a little bit, but overall, that one's in a really good position as well. And then again, the budget versus actuals. We had $4 million increase budgeted and right now we have seven. So really, really well performing funds this year. And then just to highlight, the $4 million budgeted for the CERC that wasn't needed. That helped keep the fund positive, the fund balance increasing. And then, like I mentioned, the $500,000 for franchise fees and indirect expenses to post back will increase that net position in the general fund. And then just summarizing, the water and sewer fund balances will decrease as we get these final adjustments posted. So overall, it was a really good year. Really happy with it and we're in a really good, really good position going into FY '26. And that's all I got. Now be happy to answer any questions.
Councilmentors.
Thank you for the presentation, Mr. Carson. It's nice to not be relying on CTAX, so we found a different way to make things happen.
100%.
So what are we going to do with that $4 million that was earmarked for the CERC?
So that money just rolls over. What we did, we carried over $1 million into the budget for FY '26 just to cover any expenses that carried over to finish up this CERC. Other than that, it just rolls back into the fund balance. So it's just there to use. If we want to augment the budget throughout the year during FY '26, we have another project that we want to do. We need the funds. We can augment the budget and use those funds that weren't utilized this last year.
Can we use that for anything in the enterprise funds or does it have to be separate?
It has to stay in the general fund.
Okay, that's what I thought. Thank you.
Yep.
Councilman Hannah.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Mr. Carson, it's always good to see you. Thank you for the report. I like the visuals, so it helps everyone kind of understand with the charts and it's much appreciated. I just want to thank you for your hard work. You know, a couple of years ago, when we started down this track, a lot of the numbers, I think people sort of had doubts. People were second guessing, and it's good to get reports like this that confirm what you've said, what we set to do. And it's really great for the city. So second year in a row, A++. Thanks for all your hard work, being conservative and coming ahead. While all the other cities are cutting back, we have a slight surplus and don't want to brag too much yet, but good job. Thank you.
Councilwoman Zabrowski, just did I just call on myself?
Yeah.
Okay. Is because we don't really know a cost after this preliminary engineering report? And we, I guess this is a question for engineering as well, but whatever the cost from this, is that going to be penciled into our wastewater treatment for the next quarterly financial report? Or because in our staff report, it says that it wasn't budgeted? And so I guess I am just curious kind of where that falls.
Right, so the way the enterprise funds work, it more operates as a business where your fees are set to kind of cover these costs. And in operating a business, unexpected things pop up and you just kind of have to take care of it. So depending on the cost, we'll go from there. Yeah, we'll work with the engineering department, the utilities department. And if, you know, it's shifting priorities, saying, okay, well, we have the money. Excuse me. We have the money, we just may need to postpone this project until the next year. We'll just move it down the CIP plan. Or we have the funds to do all of it. It'll just be an ongoing conversation as we go through that.
Awesome. Thank you so much. Any other questions? I don't think that we have to take action. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Ready? Okay, we're going to go back to item 5.1, Discussion Impossible Action Regarding the Final Preliminary Engineering Report for the City of Fernley Water Treatment Plant, Caustic Soda and Compressed Air Systems Improvement, and Seek Direction to Proceed with Final Design Bidding Services and Construction Costs.
Once again, Anna Navarro, the Utilities Engineering Manager with the Utilities Department. And I apologize for that hiccup. I will call our consultant, the Keller and Associates, who will be presenting the preliminary engineering report for the Caustic Soda and Compressed Air System Improvements.
Good evening, council members. My name is Jeremy Wilson with Keller Associates for the record. Keller Associates, we are a civil engineering consultant. I guess just wanted to start out by saying how much we appreciate the opportunity to work with city staff here and serve the city of Fernley on this project. It's been an honor to get to know your team, both in the engineering group and also at the water treatment facility as well. So task at hand, so we worked with city staff to put together. So task at hand, so we worked with city staff to put together a preliminary engineering report that was taking a look at the caustic soda chemical lines and some capacity items at the water treatment plant. So next slide, please. Do I? Thank you. Perfect. So it's just a brief overview. So we're going to talk project background. Hey, why are you guys spending, why should we spend money on this project, right? What the existing conditions are, are out there. Some of the alternatives that we looked at, and then also, hey, what we landed on in terms of proposed improvements, the associated costs, and then the recommended next steps. And then we'll be happy to stand for questions at the conclusion. So with that, I'll let my colleague take it away.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the council. My name is Dylan Carey. Thank you for giving us the time to present this project to you today. The City of Fernley Water Treatment Plant is rated for 20 million gallons per day. It is a microfiltration membrane facility. Some of the major treatment processes include flocculation sedimentation, membrane microfiltration, chlorine disinfection. This plant has a future surface water intake planned and in the preliminary design stages. So in advance of this, it will need improvements to the pH adjustment and the reliability for the microfiltration processes that are critical to the operation of this plant. It is the only water treatment plant in the City of Fernley, so it is critical that it remains operational. With the caustic soda system, caustic soda is a hazardous chemical that is used for pH adjustment. It has a propensity to leak when it reaches, when pipelines reach the end of their lifespan, which can be around the 15-year mark. The treatment plant, as of now, is 16 years old, so it has hit that lifespan. And what you're seeing there is a chemical vault in the yard where there is leaking caustic soda that is hazardous to the touch that operations staff has had to work with. In addition to that, the operation of this pH adjustment system has essentially failed with failing pumps, pipelines, leaks, and has become unreliable. Some of the P E R elements that we'll go over are a review of the existing conditions, which, as you can see, the caustic soda system has issues throughout the facility, and evaluation of the alternatives in this report and recommendations for improvements. The other system that was evaluated in this report was the compressed air system. While the system seems small, this operates multiple times a day, often five to 12 times per day, and operates 252 valves in the membrane microfiltration building. This operates in a lead lag scenario, so one compressor kicks on, and then as the other compressor is needed, it will kick on to serve that demand as well. There is no redundant compressor for this system, and without that, you can exceed, as you build out for future surface water, the demand that these compressors are able to provide. So improvements to this system, lack reliability requirements that are needed per Nevada Administrative Code. For the caustic soda system, the alternatives that were evaluated were looking at how we could specify improvements to the existing piping system if we were to restore the lifespan. We also looked at another pipe method with fusion bonding with polyethylene piping. It is more difficult and expensive to install than standard PVC with solvent jointed bonds. It is industry standard. Operations staff is very familiar and very capable of making a quick repair and keeping the system operational. And looking at a combination for critical areas where they may have some hazards regularly or working regularly. If there were a leak in these areas, because nothing is completely leak-proof, then this would pose a difficult repair for operations staff. So we looked at the cost of these. Ultimately, the most cost-effective and the most manageable is going with standard PVC. With the compressed air system, we will be adding a second air receiver tank and a third air compressor. So then operations staff has flexibility during downtimes when they need to make repairs to any one compressor or tank. It allows us to utilize the existing infrastructure by tying in right next to it in the same location. A single tank was also evaluated for larger air volume. Without getting too far into the details, this wouldn't allow for the redundancy needed for operations staff to take off one part of the system at a time to work on it. So the recommended improvements are going to be replacing chemical pumps that are required for metering, pH adjustment, and disposal of processed chemical used to clean the membranes. We'll be using dual-contained PVC piping, so that way, if there is an incidental leak, it's contained in a secondary clear layer that operations staff can easily identify. They already have a lot of this system at the plant, and it works well for them at this time. And we'll look for ways to improve safety in the chemical vaults. We'll also be improving those chemical vaults with new hatch and ladder replacements as the caustic soda has deteriorated some of the bottom rungs in there and made it difficult for them to go all the way in safely. And then for the air compressor, we'll be adding that third compressor and the second tank. We'll be tying in with the same stainless steel piping and making skated modifications and integration. There will be concrete pad modifications required in order to allow for proper drainage in the microfiltration facility. It is a water plant, water does happen, and we want to ensure that what we do install allows operations staff to clear the way in any event of a water leak, if there is one. So there will be electrical improvements, skated integration, and controls and concrete pad modifications included in this. And with that, I'll pass it back off to Jeremy to talk about the costs.
Thanks, Don. Thanks, Don. Yeah, so with those alternatives, I guess I'll back up just a little bit. So as part of the P E R process, we did our evaluation, presented that to city staff, and worked with them to, along with our recommendation, provide the recommended improvements that you're seeing here with the associated costs. So we have it broken down into the improvements there for the caustic soda, the compressed air, and then the miscellaneous, excuse me, miscellaneous chemical improvements that are associated as well. So we've taken that all the way through the construction phase services. So next steps, so like I said, we've done the preliminary engineering. The next steps is going to be enrolling into the design development, getting that design approved by N D E P, and then going into the bidding and construction process. So with that, we will happily answer any questions from council.
Councilman Torres.
How, how hard do you think it's going to be to get past N D E P? Is it kind of like, pretty simple, you just get all the paperwork and then they review it, and we should be good to go?
Yeah, so we, I guess the typical review and approval process for the state is fairly straightforward. So when they're looking at a set of construction documents like this, they're looking through, you know, state code compliance. So yeah, I'd anticipate it, you know, timeline-wise, once we get to the bidding phase and are submitting those documents to them, you're anywhere from 30 to 45 days timeline. Thank you. You're welcome.
Councilman Hannon.
If there's no further questions, I'm prepared to make a motion.
I have a question. Councilman Lau.
I was ready to make a motion too. I have no questions. Good job.
I have a couple of questions, probably partially for you and then also for our engineering department. On one of the slides, it said, it said that even with the air compressor modifications, it still wouldn't reach standard. Is there any way you can go back to that? I was going to stop you, but I don't want to mess up your presentation. It said that even with the, with having, having both going and having a standby, that it still wouldn't meet standard? Can you just explain that portion to me real fast?
Sure, with the second receiver tank. So if you think about the compressor and the receiver tank in a line, then those systems are dependent upon each other. The compressors can run, and you can take one compressor down with the third compressor. Two can be operational in those high-demand times, but no matter what, you're still bottlenecked by that single tank. The dual-tank system allows for one tank to be taken offline, potentially be replaced, while the rest of the building can still be served by the other tank. So we would have two compressors and one tank as the absolute minimum required system. And then standards for reliability after that would be one redundant system of the same size. So that is the reason we did not evaluate fully the single-tank alternative. We did assess the volume needed, however, it comes out to the single-tank volume required working with the membrane microfiltration manufacturers. Does that answer your question?
Yes.
Of course, yeah.
Somewhat, although I think some of these terms, if there's any way, like for myself as a councilmember, who's not an engineer and had to Google the caustic soda and try and understand how, you know, how, how that works and how it deteriorates stuff. It would be great if, if for our engineering department, for me, if when we do have stuff like this come through, if we could have some explanation into like the chemicals or, you know, I understand PVC, but some of the other, some of the other stuff, maybe not so much. Thank you so much for your presentation. I, I just had a question for our engineering. It's similar to my question that I had for finance. But part of the staff report said, this sounds, I mean, it's like $800,000. And so I guess I was kind of curious what C I P projects are going to be falling to the wayside in order to make up for this project.
Son Kim, Utility Director, City of Fernley, for the record. We did not budget for this item because this is a kind of an emergency item for us. But we did have a budget for our new water, surface water intake program, which is $4 million. We can utilize that portion of the budget for this one. Since $4 million is enough for us to go for the first step of this service water integration program. If, when council approves that plan, then we can utilize that fund for this project at the moment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Mendoza.
Hey, thank you guys for your presentation. I do have a question for you guys. With the numbers that you presented to us, that's just strictly for engineering, that is not construction cost, correct?
So that's, thank you for your question, councilmember. That is inclusive of estimated cost, both for the actual physical building, the construction costs, as well as the engineering design and, excuse me, administration fees as well.
So this is a total estimate or engineer estimate project cost?
That's correct.
And then we'll get those real numbers when we send out R F Ps to contractors, and those could change, give or take.
That's correct.
Okay. My next question is, is it sounds like this is an emergency fix that we're doing for something, in my opinion, to have, like the ladder going into the vaults deteriorate to the point of we're losing two steps, that, that has probably been a few years in the making, if I'm not correct, am I right?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay, so if it's an emergency now, was there anything in place to keep those, having vault checks or safety checks within the vaults to make sure that we're not losing half the ladder before we actually make a correction?
This is Son Kim, Utility Director, for the record. Yeah, that's correct. We are doing our best to maintain our system because we cannot shut down a water plant at all. So, but however, this is very sensitive equipment for us to maintain all the time, no matter what. Our plant is about 16 years old. It's been working fine. Now it's getting deteriorating and aging, so all of a sudden, it come pop up. So we do our best in our ability to hold on this to it until we fix this whole system. Because this is in conjunction with our new surface water intake system. Anyway, when we take our surface water, it is more burden for us. So we need a lot better system for this caustic and, and air compression system, that's why. But we still have, I would say, maintaining okay, but we cannot hold on anymore, any, any longer anymore. Thank you.
Okay. And a quick question on the vaults, it sounds like we're going to be replacing some vaults. Is there a new design on a vault that helps with this caustic soda? Like PVC-coated vaults or PVC-coated ladders to keep them from, because the ladder's a big deal to have somebody in a confined space. And we got ladders failing. Is there something that's in play from the engineering portion to make sure that doesn't take pace?
Yeah, thank you for that question. I'll, I'm going to add a little bit to your previous question. So the, the caustic soda as a chemical is very corrosive, right? And part of the reason, you know, that we discovered as we were doing this work, what that has become more of an urgent project is what we're seeing is some of those joints, the glued fittings are deteriorating over time, right? And when that starts to happen, once you reach the end of that useful lifespan, right? Like you're, you're going to, your, your rate that you're going to see those failures increases over time, right? So the, the water treatment operations staff, they've identified, like, hey, maybe they have one failure. They're going to go out and repair it, right? But as they start to see this big pattern, right, they recognize like, hey, it's time to do something about this, right? And then to, to address your second question, so within those vaults, so we're going to be doing, looking at doing a couple of things. The first one is we're replacing just the piping that's, that's leaking, right, in the, in those vaults, with the vision of having that go away, right? And then we'll also, as part of the design, we will look at like, hey, does it make sense to coat, you know, these facilities? We're going to look at different materials for, for those step ladders, something that maybe doesn't deteriorate, right, with, when it interacts with that caustic soda in order to address that.
Okay, just want to make sure we're being proactive and thinking about those things as we're spending money and replacing things out there, so thank you.
Councilman Lau.
I just wanted to make a comment. I wanted to thank you, Mr. Son Kim, for being on top of it. You're a great man, and good seeing you at the gym Sunday.
Councilman Hannon.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Protem Zabrowski. With that being said, thank you for the presentation, everyone. I'm prepared to make a motion. I move to approve the P E R Water Treatment Plant caustic soda and compressed air system improvements and authorize staff to move forward with design preparation and bid documents and completion of construction for the total cost of $807,100.
Second motion.
Please vote.
Item passes, 5-0. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, I think at this time, we'll go back to the agenda item that we moved from consent to the regular agenda item 2.26. Deputy City Manager.
Deputy City Manager Lydia Altic. The reason I put this on discussion was because the proposal itself we received from coming management is the same. The amount of money that we are requesting city council to approve changed. We decided to take out of that, the proposal is based on three things. Project management to finish out the Community Response and Resource Center, and that would take us into August and possibly September. And it also, I guess, two things, and then it also included a cost estimate service of $5,000 to look at the early learning center and come up with another cost estimate. We took that out. So we're just going to be asking coming management to continue their service of project management and city representative for August and September. And I should also say that if we turn out, we do not need them throughout September, or we only need them for one week in September, the amount will be prorated. So the cost in the, the change of cost from the original staff report to the one that's been revised is $5,000.
Councilman Torres.
If there's no questions, I'll make a motion.
I have a question. I hope that, I hope it doesn't sound silly, but I guess I am just trying to imagine why we need to continue to pay a project manager if the project is finished.
No, it's a good question. Project closeout requires a lot of time and making sure that everything is done correctly, and he checks the work presented by Core. I did not mention, which I should have, he's also managing the Boys and Girls Club Playground, which was added. managing the Boys and Girls Club Playground, which was added. So he is completely managing that project, making sure that Core gets their people there and they show up to do the work. And by the way, it's turning out really great. And if we choose to move forward with the shade structures, he would be there to manage that as well. I really don't see him having to do too much work in September.
Okay, yeah, I guess my next question is going to be, when will we know that he's done? That we're not, that we're not paying for services anymore?
Right now, they are reconciling all the costs to give the last bill invoice to the city that I expect in two weeks. And I also expect there to be a final certificate of occupancy in the next one or two weeks.
And this bill is outside of that bill that the city is going to receive for services?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilman Torres.
Thank you. I moved to approve request for amendment number two of the C R R C contract with Coming Group.
Second.
Please vote. The vote passes five zero. Lydia, if there's any way that you can just update us the next council meeting, kind of where we're at with like project management, that would be awesome.
Will do.
Okay, public forum, this portion of the meeting devoted to the public, did I skip something? No, we pulled those. Yeah, we just pulled those for future. I think there was three. This portion of the meeting devoted to the public, if you wish to comment, you can do so in person at the meeting or use raise your hand feature in Zoom. Public comments are limited to three minutes. Please avoid repetition. Is there any public input? If you're speaking at the podium, please print your name on the sheet provided.
For the record, Cody Wagner, I just wanted to comment on that last item. I've kind of been involved with this process since 2021. I have a lot of positive things to say about Coming Group and Mike Allen. I think he's done a pretty good job at managing everything. We haven't seen eye to eye on everything, but we've kind of worked through differences. You know, the senior center being an example on the county side, that project was plagued with all these change orders. We haven't seen any of that on this project. I mean, it's what, it's been expensive, but what the original budget was, was where the project came in, which is why you have a $4 million overage on your, on your budget, which is a great thing. So Mike's done a good job. I have zero issue with continuing that contract to close out the project and I think it's a good idea. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there any public comment on Zoom? Okay.
Mayor Protem?
Yes.
I have one announcement that I forgot to make. There is a community workshop for our corridor action plan that's happening and I believe it's on Friday. Tomorrow, Thursday, what time? 5:00 PM at the senior center and they're going to be wanting input from the public for the corridor action plan. And as a reminder, the corridor action plan is three corridors. One is Farm District Road, one is 95 from Main Street to the high school, and then the third is Main Street from exit 46 up to exit 48. Input is strongly needed. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go ahead and adjourn. Our next meeting is August 20th at 5:00.